Okay, before tonight's meeting begins, we will have a student-led reflection. And then after that, District Two Board Member Ray Grexson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But a little bit about our student. Her name is Sophia Defner, a J.B. Morton eighth grader. Sophia is an honor student and is also active in J.B. Morton Cheer Squad, the choir, and Beta Club. And if everyone could please stand, and we'll let Sophia do her thing.
Dear God, you're the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all of your blessings. We ask that you bless and guide our school board members to make the best decisions for all of our schools. And we would also thank, um, wait, sorry. And we'll also ask for all of our staff members and scholars, who we ask to keep safe during school. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sophia. You did a great job, and good luck this year at J.B. Morton. Have a great eighth grade year.
Thank you.
So I call the meeting of the School Board of September 20, 2023, to order, and let the record show that all board members are in attendance, along with our Superintendent Dr. Ken Ortling and our Board Secretary, Ms. Shelley Babado. 2.01, National School Bus Safety Week Proclamation. And Mr. John Smith, can you please read that for us?
On behalf of you, Mr. President. National School Board Safety Week Proclamation. Whereas St. Charles Parish school bus operators are a vital part of the St. Charles Parish Public School System, traveling more than 1.5 million miles each year as they transport more than 8,000 students each day to and from school and to school sanctioned activities. Whereas St. Charles Parish Public School bus drivers are committed to professional development and training to improve the knowledge and understanding and skills to a comprehensive program of public awareness, continued education, and advocacy for better traffic and road conditions as a way to ensure the safety and well-being of students and other drivers who share the district roadways with school buses. And whereas more than 200 Transportation Department employees, including operators, dispatchers, trainers, technicians, and support staff involved in the transportation program, have committed, has compiled outstanding safety record in Louisiana. And whereas the week of October 16 through 20, 2023 is National School Bus Safety Week throughout the nation in recognition of the contribution operators and school transportation staffs make to the nation's public education system. It is fitting that we set aside a special time to commend these dedicated employees. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board supports the goals and ideals of the National School Bus Safety Week and encourages all citizens to recognize St. Charles Parish School Bus operators and support staffs for the work they do. I move approval.
Second, motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that proclamation is adopted. Next is 2.02, National School Lunch Week Proclamation. And if, that's, you know, school lunch was probably my favorite part of the day when I was in school, so.
Mine too.
Ms. Weber, could you please read that one for us?
It would be my pleasure. Um, National School Lunch Week Proclamation. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation for over 60 years through advanced practices and nutrition education. And whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children. And whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child feeding programs. And there is evidence of continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, proclaim the week of October 9th through the 13th, 2023, as the date to observe National School Lunch Week. And we encourage all citizens and residents to become aware and concerned about their children and their own national habits, nutrition habits, excuse me, and hope of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future. I move, we approve.
Second. Seven motion by Ms. Weber, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to say that, uh, as I stated on TikTok at the HHS Lunch Review, that turkey stew is unbelievable. And when you dip the bread in it, it's even better. So thanks for what you do.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say a few words, especially as we have so many CMP teammates in the audience. I just want to thank you, we want to thank you personally for your commitment to excellence in preparing and making sure our students have very nutritious meals. But I think most importantly, you truly feed them love, caring and understanding, and make sure they feel as though they belong in the schools that they belong in. So thank you for that. Thank you for your commitment to excellence. We appreciate you.
Mr. President, can I invite them to stand in front of us and, and board? If you so desire, we could stand and maybe take a picture with them.
Make sure y'all come on this side. They're trying to hide in the back.
Nice job, nice job.
I'd like your first in line for gumbo.
Well, nobody wants to be in the middle.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. If being no more discussion, can you please cast your vote? And that proclamation is adopted. Next is 2.03, the Louisiana Educational Diagnosticians Month Proclamation. I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Scott Cody to read that, please.
I hope I can do it better than that, Mr. President. Louisiana Educational Diagnosticians Month Proclamation. Whereas children have a natural desire and propensity to learn, and it is imperative to adequately support the needs to children and youth. And whereas children have a right to high-quality education that meets their individual needs. And whereas children's mental health is closely linked to their successful learning and development, and schools must apply sound psychological principles to instruction and learning, cultivate children's intellectual, social, and emotional development, and promote prevention and early intervention. And whereas schools must ensure a safe, healthy environment for all children and be able to recognize and respond to their emotional, psychological diagnostic needs, including those caused by a crisis. And whereas educational diagnosticians are specially trained to help parents and educators identify and reduce risk factors, create effective, caring schools, access helpful community resources, and implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies to foster healthy child development and academic success. And whereas during Louisiana Educational Diagnosticians Month, we recognize the vital role that educational diagnosticians play in the personal and academic development of Louisiana's children. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, hereby proclaim October 2023 as Louisiana Educational Diagnoti- Diagno- Diagnosticians Month in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. Mr. President, I move that we accept this and that someone else reads it next year.
Seven motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Ms. Weber. Any discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And that proclamation is adopted. Next is 2.04, Digital Wellness Month Proclamation. And Mr. Ray Grexson, can you please read that for us?
Sure, as long as I don't have to read the previous one next year or ever again. Uh, Digital Wellness Month Proclamation. Whereas the St. Charles Parish Public Schools recognizes that our students are members of an increasingly connected digital society. And whereas curriculum, instruction, and assessment is increasingly being accessed through a variety of online learning platforms that transfer the way our students explore, create, connect, and learn. And whereas the St. Charles Parish Public Schools uses digital resources to provide innovative, meaningful, and equitable educational experiences across the district. And whereas the St. Charles Parish Public Schools is committed to creating a culture of learning that prepares students to become future-ready. And whereas the St. Charles Parish Public Schools is committed to supporting educators and parents in preparing students to use digital media while limiting the risks of the online world, such as loss of privacy, cyberbullying, and copyright infringement. And whereas raising awareness of responsible digital wellness is beneficial to the safety and well-being of our students, their families, and St. Charles Parish. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish Public School Board hereby proclaims the month of October 2023 as Digital Wellness Month. I move to accept.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Grexson, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that proclamation is adopted. The final proclamation tonight is 2.05, which is the United Way Month Proclamation. And Mr. Al Sufferin, can you please read that for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. It would be my pleasure. United Way Month Proclamation. Whereas on October 5th, 2023, United Way of St. Charles will officially begin its annual campaign to raise funds to meet vital health and human service needs for St. Charles Parish. And whereas the mission of this organization is to advance with member agencies the health and human service agenda of St. Charles Parish by expanding resources and applying them effectively to meet community needs. And whereas hundreds of volunteers have come together each year in St. Charles Parish to participate in raising the needed funds through their annual campaign. And whereas these funds are used to touch the lives of thousands of people through such programs as disaster relief, rehabilitation, and counseling for the mentally and physically disabled, and special programs for the youth and elderly. And whereas widespread public support of the human service organizations funded by United Way of St. Charles makes St. Charles Parish a better place for all of its citizens. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board wishes to join the great people of St. Charles Parish to live united, to care about continuing to improve our quality of life by supporting the United Way of St. Charles. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, do hereby proclaim the month of October as United Way Month in St. Charles Parish Public Schools. And I move for approval of this proclamation.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mr. Cody. Any discussion?
Mr. President, we have Ms. Mara Platsmeyer here from United Way.
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to thank the School Board for recognizing the United Way and our Battle for the Paddle event. We are having, uh, the Battle for the Paddle will be on Thursday, October the 5th. Uh, it's open to the public from 3:00 to 7:30. Kids 10 and under can come in and eat for free. Without the partnership that you guys have with us, or we have with you, the event wouldn't be able to take place. You know, we have, uh, we offer transportation from, uh, I am so sorry, I'm nervous. Oh my gosh, I've done this for 13 years and I'm still up here nervous. I am so sorry. Um, and so the school bus drivers are going to shuttle the public from the West Bank Bridge Park down to the Community Center. We're just very grateful and, um, I, you know, I just can't thank the, the community enough. I mean, without, without them and our partnerships, we wouldn't be able to feed kids on the weekends, and we wouldn't be able to build wheelchair ramps for, for those who are in need. And, um, we recently got a call, there was a, a single mom and a child living in their car. And so it's things like this that happen in our community that because of events like this and because of the support that we have, we're able to actually give back and, and make the community a better place to live. So apologize for being nervous. I'm very grateful to be here, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. President, I would just like to note that, um, one of the co-chairs for the 2023-2024 United Way Campaign is our distinguished Superintendent Dr. Wortling. I just wanted to make note of that.
If I could just say, so although I am, I am a co-chair, that just means as a school system, we're all in this year, right? So we need to make sure we have at least 75% participation. Last year's was around 65%. So that's our goal this year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. If no other discussion, please cast your vote. And that proclamation is adopted. We're going to take a pause. If, if anyone would like to leave before we go into the business portion of the, the meeting, you can, I know our, our cafeteria workers, they might want to exit at this time. You don't have to stay for the entire meeting. So if you want to exit, do so now, and then we'll pick up with the business portion of the meeting in about 30 seconds.
In order to leave, you have to say "diagnostician," correct, though.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for saving the day. Just to share with you, there, there was a lizard, and it was affecting Ms. Weber's, uh, outlook on things. So Mr. Smith took care of that. Okay, let, business portion of our meeting is 3.01. And the first item is the minutes of the August 14th, 2023 Committee, the August 16th, 2023 Board Meeting, and the August 21st, 2023 Budget Review Committee.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes for the August 14th, 2023 Committee Meeting Minutes, August 16th, 2023 Board Meeting Minutes, and August 21st, 2023 Budget Review Minutes.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? If none, please cast your vote. And last month's meeting minutes are adopted. Next is 3.02, which is the renewal of School Board liability insurance. St. Charles Parish Public School purchases liability insurance to protect the district from claims bought by third parties. Current coverage is provided for general liability, excess liability, auto liability, educator's legal liability, employment practices liability, sexual abuse and molestation liability, unmanned aerial vehicle liability, and bus physical damage liability. The renewal of the liability insurance coverage will take effect on October 1st, 2023. This agenda item was reviewed at the Risk Management Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 18th, 2023, and is aligned with GOE of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the renewal of the liability insurance package with O Republic at a cost of $507,998.25, plus an additional cost not to exceed $20,000 for unmanned aerial vehicle liability.
A second.
Seven motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Boudreau. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 3.02 is approved. Next is 3.03, which is Legal Services Resolution. This resolution is necessary in order to comply with the requirements of Louisiana Revised Statute 47:263, authorizing the School Board to hire and maintain a diverse list of available attorneys when legal matters arise. Administration desires to include Foley and Mansfield, PLLP, in the list of approved attorneys to assist with school law, general liability, and workman's compensation. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on September 18th, 2023, and aligned with GOE of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move we approve the resolution for legal services with Foley and Mansfield, PLLP.
Second. Seven motion by Ms. Boudreau, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. That resolution's adopted. Next is 3.04, is bid authorization request. The Hornville High School Building A Digital Media Center and Commons Renovation Project is an approved project of the 2022 bond issue. The construction plan for the Hornville High School Building A Digital Media Center and Commons Renovation Project has been completed by the architect and are ready for bid. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 18th, 2023, and is aligned with GOE of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval of the bid authorization request for the Hornville High School Building A Digital Media Center and Commons Renovation Project.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And 3.04 is approved, and so we can go off a bit. Next is 3.05, which is change order number one for R.K. Smith Middle School Building A Addition and Main Corridor Flooring Replacement Project. The contract modifications include a cha- in change order number one are as follows. Grind off all existing oil-based adhesive down to existing bare concrete slab to allow for insulation of the moisture mitigation system and new ceramic tile floor at an amount of $29,236.07. There's also a revision by the Fire Marshal, which is a cost of $52,090.11 for a total of $81,326.18. Ten contract days were added to, added to the contract as a result of the construction change directive. Approve this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 18th, 2023, and is aligned with GOE of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept change order number one for the R.K. Smith Middle School Building A Addition and Main Corridor Flooring, Flooring Replacement Project at a cost of $81,326.18.
Second. Seven motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item, excuse me, that item approves, is approved. Next is 3.06, which is a change order number one for the East Bank Head Start Renovation and Addition Project. The contract modifications, including change order number one, are as follows. Plumbing modifications, um, modification to existing plumbing rough ends and to accommodate new plumbing in compliance with code at a cost of $25,131.53. To pull new wires for fire alarm system and add junction boxes at a cost of $11,034. And to rebuild flush valves on existing fixtures being reused at a cost of $3,797.15 for a total of $39,929.02. The total, total of six contract days were added to the contract as a result of the construction change directives. Approve this change order will allow the district to make the necessary modifications to the existing contract. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 18th, 2023, and is aligned with GOE of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve change order number one for the East Bank Head Start Renovation and Addition Project at a cost of $39,929.02.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is 3.07, which is substantial completion of the Satellite Center Roof Replacement Project. The Satellite Center Roof Replacement Project is ready to be accepted as substantially complete. The final inspection was held on Friday, September 8th, 2023, with punchless items remaining. The engineer recommends acceptance. Acceptance of substantial completion of the Satellite Center Roof Replacement Project will allow the contractor to process all closeout documents. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 18th, 2023, and is aligned with GOE of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept substantial completion for the Satellite Center Roof Replacement Project.
Second. Seven motion by Ms. Alexander, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And three point zero seven is approved. Next is three point zero eight, which is personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of the Saint Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to receive the personnel items as presented to the Board.
Second. So have a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And the Board approved the personnel items. Next is three point zero nine, which is revision to Board Policy one point four point five, which is public participation at school board meetings, and this is the first reading. Upon review of the Board Policy and Procedure one point four point five, public participation at school board meetings revisions were required as mandated by law. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and is aligned with goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the revisions to Policy and Procedure one point four point five, public participation at school board meetings, for a first reading.
Second. So have a motion by Mr. Cody, a second by Mr. Gregson. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item's approved. Next item is three point one zero, which is Industrial Tax Exemption Application for Saint Charles Clean Fuse LLC. Effective July first, two thousand eighteen, Governor Edwards directed that changes be made to the Industrial Tax Exemption Program, known as ITIP, which alters the conditions under which a manufacturing company may be granted an ad valorem tax exemption and allows local governing bodies to be involved in the approval process. Each local governing body may approve the exemption of eighty percent of its share of the ad valorem taxes over a ten-year period. Saint Charles Clean Fuse LLC filed two ITIP applications with the Louisiana Board of Commerce and Industry for a planned three-point-five-billion-dollar ammonia production plant in Saint Rose, and the applications were approved. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the industrial tax exemption applications of Saint Charles Clean Fuels LLC.
Second. So have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion?
Mr. President, we have three representatives from the Clean Fuel Project in the audience. I'd just like to recognize them. We have Miss Chandra Stacey, Sir John Bagley, and Mr. Ramey Sharaman in the audience. Would you stand and be recognized, please? Thank you. I just would like the Board to know that this project will have a tremendous economic impact on Saint Charles Parish, and it will have a tremendous impact on the Saint Charles Parish community in general. I had the opportunity to participate in a Zoom call with the representatives from Clean Fuel today to clear up any misconceptions or questions that might relate. I contacted the superintendent prior to that meeting, and on yesterday, I believe it was, and I asked the superintendent if there were any questions that he might have had regarding the project, that he would forward those to me so that I could bring them up during that Zoom call today. So I think that I would recommend to the Board that we approve the final application for the Clean Fuel Project, and they can get started and get moving with the project. It will be a tremendous benefit to the parish as well as to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you, Saint Charles Clean Fuse, for attending our meeting tonight.
Mr. President, also with that group is our Saint Charles Parish Director of Economic Development, Mr. Corey Fochet.
Thank you, Mr. Fochet, for attending tonight. Anyone else? If not, please cast your vote. And that item's approved unanimously. Okay, next is three point one one, which is the reappointment of Dr. Rodney R. LaFon Performing Arts Center Endowment Board members until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. The Board approved the appointment of the initial Board members for the Dr. Rodney R. LaFon Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund on April twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. The terms of the two of the Board members, Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders, have expired. In July of two thousand twenty-three, the Endowment Board voted to reappoint both Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders to the Board for an additional one-year term. The Endowment Board also met on August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, to ratify the virtual vote into the official minutes. As the overseeing custodian of the Endowment Fund, the Saint Charles Parish School Board must approve the reappointment. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move that we approve the reappointment of Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders to the Dr. Rodney R. LaFon Performing Arts Center Endowment Board until June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four.
Second. So have a motion by Ms. Boudreau, a second by Mr. Sufferin. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item passes. Next is three point one two, which is the state-funded stipends for district employees. The Louisiana Legislature has appropriated funds for public school districts to pay one-time stipends to employees in the amount of two thousand to each certificated employee and one thousand to each support employee. The district will pay these stipends on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. These state-funded stipends are in addition to the district-funded recruitment and retention payments of fifteen hundred dollars to full-time and permanent part-time employees approved by the Board at its June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, and which will also be paid on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. The superintendent is excluded from these payments. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and is aligned with goals C and D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the state-funded stipends for district employees as presented in the amount of two million, five hundred and three thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and as you noted, these are all provided by the state.
Second. So have a motion by Mr. Sufferin, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. And that item's approved, no opposition. Next is three point one three, which is the accounts payable for the month of August of thirty, of two thousand twenty-three. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transaction is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and is aligned with goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of August two thousand twenty-three as written.
Second. So I have a motion by Ms. Boudreau, and I think a second by Mr. Alexander. Any Board discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. Okay, Mr. White, our accounts payable's been approved, so go ahead and pay the bills. Okay, next is our closing items in tonight's meeting. The first is four point zero one. If there's any committee chair that'd like to give a report on their committees that met this past month, please do so at this time.
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee, consisting of myself, Mrs. Boudreau, and Mr. Alexander, held a meeting on Monday, September eighteenth, and we covered four items. All four of those items were referred to the full Board this evening, and they were approved. Those four items were the industrial tax exemption applications for Saint Charles Clean Fuels LLC, reappointment of Dr. Rodney R. LaFon Performing Arts Center Endowment Board members until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, the state-funded stipends for district employees, and the accounts payable for the month of August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
Mr. President, the Capital Improvements Committee, consisting of you, Mr. Sufferin, and myself as Chair, met on Monday, September eighteenth. There were seven items on our agenda. The first item was accept the addition of Grace Abert Curtis Architects to our school board's preferred list of architects and engineers. Second item, we approve the architects and engineers' recommendations from the administration for the Long Range Plan for Physical Education and Athletic Facilities Phase Two, and that, those two items were for committee meeting only. The third item was bid authorization request for Hornville High School Building A Digital Media Center and the Commons Renovations Project. That item came to the Board table tonight, and it was approved. The fourth item on our agenda Monday night was change order number one for R.K. Smith Middle School Building A Addition and Main Corridor Flooring Replacement. That item was also brought to the Board table and approved tonight. The fifth item was change order number one on, for the East Bank Head Start Renovation Project. That item was moved to tonight's meeting and approved as well. And the sixth item was substantial completion of the Satellite Center Roof Replacement Project. That item was also approved tonight. And the last item on our Monday night's agenda was to authorize the administration to look into a proposed property donation that is next door to the Hornville High School, and that item was for committee meeting only, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Anyone else? The Risk Management Insurance Committee did meet on Monday. We, when the executive session had our legal update, we also had to renew school liability insurance, which was brought to the full Board tonight and was approved, and we also had the legal services resolution that was approved tonight as well, and that concludes my report. Next is four point zero two, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the athletic season is underway, please be reminded that Saint Charles Parish Public Schools has a bag protocol for safety purposes. Fans can carry see-through bags of any size, non-see-through bags, no larger than eight and a half by eleven inches, small clutch bags with or without a handle or strap. This bag protocol will be in place for games and athletic contests. The complete bag protocol and frequently asked questions are available on the district website. Also, tobacco and tobacco products are strictly prohibited on school grounds as stipulated in policy and state law. We appreciate your cooperation. Congratulations to Mr. Jason Maudair for being selected as this year's Saint Charles Parish Public Schools Principal of the Year. He is an outstanding school leader who always places his faculty, staff, and students first. His leadership has helped steer Destrahan's continued success, as recognized by their A Accountability Rating and consistent growth in every accountability measure the last few years. We look forward to seeing him represent Saint Charles Parish in the next state competition level. Fall break is on October sixteenth and seventeenth. While schools are closed, the Central Office will be open. In conjunction with Digital Wellness Month, and to ensure we focus on all aspects of students' educational careers, our newly branded Digital Wellness Plan will be rolling out in October. The plan will educate students about maintaining a healthy balance on delivering engaging content to students, parents, and teachers based on one monthly theme. The first week of the month will consist of a short video introducing the month's theme. Each of the following weeks will include additional information related to the theme, tips for safe technology use, and graphics to engage students, parents, and teachers. We're asking families to be on the lookout for these materials. We must partner together in this knowledge-building effort because digital wellness extends so far beyond the classroom. And finally, the Satellite Center Health Science classes are partnering with the American Cancer Society to raise money during their twelfth annual Breast Cancer Awareness Project, Pink Links. Students sell Pink Links for one dollar, and schools participate to help raise money as the East and West Banks compete to see who will raise the most money for breast cancer research. The competition winner will be revealed this Friday night, the night of the Hornville Destrahan Football Game, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, during halftime. The chains will be pulled out on the field along the sidelines. After the winner is announced, the chains will be joined together to show how the community of Saint Charles Parish came together to support breast cancer. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Whiting.
I move to adjourn.
So have a motion by Ms. Boudreau, and a second, Mr. Alexander, to adjourn. Is there any objection to adjourning? Stay in the turn.